But before we begin, Mr. Tom Flowers would like to lead us into the place of these.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to everybody for which stands one nation under God, in this one with one justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. You're welcome. I'm Secretary of Duty. Please take your own.
Alden Anderson.
Present.
Alden Beatty, present. Alden Baggan.
Here.
Alden Beer. Alden Casey.
Here.
Alden Durbin. Alden Genozzo. Alden Goldin, here. Alden Grant.
Here.
Alden Hartman.
Here.
Alden Chauk, here. Alden Sniff. Alden Deckerelli.
Here.
Alden Nitro.
Here.
Alden Whitehall.
Here.
There is twelve present who do have a warrant and this point the first partner organization on the agenda is the Veterans Ceremony and parade commission. Mr. Tom Flowers, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mayor Blake, good evening. I'm representing the Veterans Ceremony Parade Commission and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Tom Flowers?
Hi.
Alden Whitehall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions. Just, Tom, thank you for all the time you put into the ceremonies and parades. We really appreciate you veterans. Guys go in for the veterans. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Alden Whitehall. I just make an announcement. Our Memorial Day program will be planting flags as we do every year on Saturday, May 27th. On May 28th, Sunday, our annual re-flaming will be at 10:00 a.m., promptly starting at 10:00 a.m. at the World War I monument right outside the door. I am going up to the green. And then at 12 o'clock, we will be supporting the Milford Garden Club with the dedication of their gold star memorial in front of the Flower Building. And then our parade will step off at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. So it's our Memorial Day weekend activities for this year. Hope you all come together.
Thank you, Tom. I also would like to repeat the service of Alden Whitehall. Just comment on the great job that you do for the veterans and the parades here in Milford. You do an outstanding job. We know how much work there is to put into that. We all appreciate it. All us veterans appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alden Beatty.
Thank you through you, Mr. Flowers. I've been asked to thank you for reputation procedure. People we most appreciate. But the Blue Star Project, I'm on that committee, and they are very impressed by your dedication to veterans, to the town, and your gracious esteem of individuals who took part in that. And they really are overcome with that appreciation for the veterans. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Alden Beatty. Everything we do is a labor of love on behalf of our veterans and our support for the Milford Garden Club and the Blue Star Memorial Project. Again, it's a labor of love. That's a wonderful marriage. The Milford Garden Club has been wonderful to work with and your new chairperson.
We made the most of it.
Most of it. She is the best. By the way, her first husband was killed in action. And she is a Army Rat. Her father happened to serve in the United States Army. They had a mother. It was just so easy to work with.
Well, I believe those two individuals are watching tonight to see what happens in your announcement this summer. So they'll appreciate that.
Well, they're wonderful. And we appreciate that help they do.
Any more questions for Mr. Flowers? So you're not to thank Tom?
Thank you.
The next partner organization on our agenda is Probate Judge. I have a letter from Eric Straight, Justice Judge Probate. I am coming inside for vacation. If I get any time for attending meetings, let me know. Like, I won't make any time. Get more meetings in court. Would you be happy if I could help you? If anybody has any questions regarding Probate Court, the Honorable Mayor of Bethel Lake will entertain a question. Anyone have any questions for the Probate Court?
And again, Mr. Chairman, through you, the Probate Judge may attend this evening depending on the travel schedule, but I'm here to answer any questions. It's a relatively de minimis budget. Again, Milford is responsible for two-thirds of the cost of operation and Orange reverses for the remaining one-third cost, and that's per statute. But again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, or Judge Beverly can follow up.
Is there any other questions for our board members? See, Tom, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The disappointing next partner organization on our agenda is Department Number 4825, Bethel Shelter, makes 92. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Tony Dolan, Executive Director of the Bethel Center, which is in the middle of Milford. With me tonight are Board Members Ed Davis, our President, and Sue Lingas, our Treasurer. And I've asked each of them to present our request to you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have after they have spoken.
I hope you can be able to hear me okay. It's been a lot of talk to talk. Um, good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'd like to start by saying that I spent 20 years in state service, the next 20 years as a state contractor. I do not end in a position here, and I understand these are dire and difficult times in the state, and evidently at state level, and it all is misfired. There are a lot of very difficult decisions to be made. I'm glad I'm not sitting in your seats having to make those decisions. What Bethel does under its excellent leadership, I have to say, is provide one of the final pieces of the safety net for the most needed citizens in our communities. Their basic life needs, food, shelter, that oftentimes will not be met or not for the existence of this organization here in the city of Milford. As times get more difficult, the need grows. We're seeing more and more people showing up for meals, showing up for assistance, and I think probably we've seen in any of recent attacks. We provide basic needs, and over the last 30 years, we've had the resorts of greater and greater creativity and funding noise to bring resources to the agency. This year, we suffered some several funding cuts already, state governments and private sources. And the board is working very diligently to reinvigorate our fundraising efforts. We're doing a good job of that so far. It's been a struggle, but as you can imagine, all nonprofits are having that same kind of struggle, basically. We're working hard to keep services flowing out of Bethel because we understand and appreciate the need. At Bethel, we've got a 34-bed shelter, and then separate from that, a separate program is the soup kitchen. The shelter serves individual men, individual women, and families. And we serve lunch every day of the week. We have dinner as offered by community organizations different nights throughout the course of the month, different organizations. Rotary Clubs, church groups will come in and provide a meal in the evening from time to time on a regular schedule. And on the rare times when we're not able to furnish an evening meal, we have a meals-to-go program which provides at least a bag lunch between 5:00 and 7:00 for anybody that knocks on the door and it's hungry. This past winter, as in previous winters, we've operated an O'Free shelter. This wasn't necessarily a very snowy winter, but it was a very cold winter. And we served nearly 100 people. 172 people took advantage of the O'Free's on 100 different nights. And each night is an additional cost for the center to bring staff in specifically to be able to serve and supervise that population that comes in and sleeps in it during the day of coming, especially the dining room and the chapel. So it's been a difficult year. It's a difficult year, which we understand that. It would be hard to meet the needs, and we certainly appreciate the support that the city has given us. And hopefully, we can maybe dodge one bullet when you're here this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. I too thank you very much for your time and commitment and caring us tonight. We're very grateful about the Bethel Center, and we're here to support our very, very wonderful Director. I am a treasurer on the board, and as of January, we adopted our 2017 operating budget. Like you can imagine, it's increasingly difficult to come up with budget numbers when our research sources are unpredictable. We now know that the contract with Department of Housing will be and has been reduced by 5 and 3/4 percent, or $11,500. And that was instituted the last half of 2016 and continues the first half of 2017. We did account for this cut in our 2017 budget, but we do not know what further reductions will be imposed. We're anticipating cuts in the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services contract, but of course, until the state budget has been adopted, there's no final decision. The federal government is discussing cuts in funding for the Community Development Lot Lot Program, which would mean a loss to us of about $18,000 annually. Although this community remains supportive and generous as ever, the competitive nature of fundraising continues to be a big challenge for us, as it is for so many. We've asked the city for an increase in our budget grant request from 80,000 to 85,000. In order to meet the needs and continue our mission to provide for the most vulnerable in our community, we cannot continue to provide the same level of high-quality services with any additional reductions in funding. The Social Services Agency continues to remain a critical component to the safety and well-being of all Connecticut communities, and the Bethel Center is prepared to continue our role as part of the city and state's safety net. We ask that you partner with us in ensuring that those we serve will not fall through the holes of that safety net that might be caused by budget cuts. Thank you for your time and commitment and certainly consideration. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alden Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Right across the street from the center is another building. Could you explain your building, Alvin?
Sure. That building is considered permanent supportive housing. We play, we own that property and work with a partner, Neighborhood Works New Horizons, used to be called, what was it, House? I don't even remember what it was called anyway. They're a nonprofit housing developer. We built five units of housing over there. There's two one-bedroom, two-two-bedroom, one-three-bedroom. It's made for two single people and three families. Permanent supportive housing is exactly what it sounds like. It's permanent. They can live there as long as they meet the criteria. And they have to have some type of disability. But the key component to that, and it's very successful, is that there is a case manager over there on duty on site. So that if they have any particular struggles, for example, they get behind in their rent for some reason, they're having, you know, they have an income loss or something like that, it is her obligation to work with the owner, Neighborhood Works New Horizons, in order to keep them in housing. So, you know, that's a safety net for them. And it's working. It's found to be working. And a lot of the state's efforts right now are targeted on the chronically homeless people like them who live there now successfully. There's only been one, there's been two units that have turned over in six years. So one woman just moved to a different location and another one moved out of state. But basically, it's been pretty stable over there.
One final question. The people that are living there, were they in the Bethel Center before?
One of our residents, oh, there was an application process because it was state funding, so there was an application process. And one of our single women ended up moving over there. She's there now. And about six months ago, we recently, when that one unit became vacant, we were able to move a family from Bethel over there, a mother and two children, which, you know, all the stars had to align at the right time when it did, and we were able to do that. So it was, we were really happy about that. So.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Alden Whitehall.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question. What's your normal operating budget?
I think it's about 7:30, 7:50. You know, sometimes someone would think 7:30, 7:40.
And you talked about the possibility of cutting services based on CDVG, based on Department of Housing. What would those cuts look like? What programs are currently getting micro-affected by that?
Depending upon how deep they go, we're looking at, you know, the possibility of cutting one meal a day and serving only lunch and meal because we have a part-time person who manages that meals-to-meal program. That's a possibility. The second possibility would be the no-free shelter because right now, even given the funding we currently have, we're still, there's still possible absorption between $3,000 and $5,000 a year. That there's no funding source that pays for that. It's us. And this year, the state said no winter shelter money at all. So we had to go to private funding in order to get funded at all this year. And some of the CDVG money that pays for it. But if you lost the CDVG money and the state's not giving us any, and the funders that gave us money this year said, no way, after this year, we're not doing this again. It's not our job. So that's a possibility. And then the third possibility would be looking at the program, the shelter program itself, and restructuring and possibly eliminating the case manager because, you know, we have to serve a certain number of people under our contract, but something has to give. But we've not increased our staff in the years we've been there. We've had only the part-time soup kitchen managers, the only admission to the staff we've had. So, you know.
I can just follow up. How much of your funding comes out of private funders and fundraising, if I can, or just about?
Let me just make sure I'm recording. I can't see the foundations. Foundations of foundations. Foundations and corporate grants are 43 percent of the total budget.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that I actually have it. I'm sorry. All right. Thank you a lot. Thanks for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alden Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The food that you serve over at the shelter in the afternoon, the lunch one, is that, do people donate the food, or is that something that you buy?
We get our food sources in several ways. One, we have a grant at the Connecticut Food Bank, thankfully donated by Mr. Garofalo, so we can shop at the Connecticut Food Bank. We also pick up from all the local vendors every day. All the stores give us all their day old produce, the day old bread, all that kind of stuff. Meats usually come from Connecticut Food Bank, but now Whole Foods and ShopRite are also giving us meats, frozen meat. So that's a good thing. There's also a woman that's involved in community plates that goes to the restaurants and brings us food from the restaurants that they would normally not, they would dispose of. And then there are courses donations. We have a lot of donations from, you know, our faith communities and individuals and people who do drives. So we're lucky when that's concerning foods, you know, which is not one of our major cost centers, Mr. Chairman.
And I have one more question. Now, Mr. Chairman, how many people come in here in the time that it's freezing and they need a place to go? Do you guys have a number for that and how many people you'll take in?
We can only take 12. 10 in the dining room and 2 in the chapel. That's our limitation in terms of, but this year, I think it only happened maybe twice, maybe at the max, three times, where we had somebody show up and we were over capacity. So we would, we had a small transportation party. We would cab them to another show, call for them. So we send somebody over, somewhere in the air. So it's always cool. It starts off 12, 3, 4, 8. Next year, now it's 12, the state's 12, we'll be there again.
Alden Casey.
Thank you, through you. Thank you for all the work you do. I just have a question. Because of Tom, can you give me an idea of how much funding you've already lost to the state and federal government over the last few years and how much capital are you resorting to your operations?
Well, this last cut, as we said, was 11, 5. The real issue for us is that with DMS, for example, Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, we've had the same contract for six years. So it's not a cut, but we're not, you know, our costs are growing up and that's, so essentially, it's costing us money every year. And that only really pays for the case manager across the street and a little bit of admin which is shrinking. DOH, two years ago, they required us for the first time to go through our request proposal process, and we had to apply competitively for this contract. And thankfully, we were awarded the contract. And when we were awarded the contract, they gave us an increase. And it was very exciting since we've never had that, an increase before. And now they've taken that away, and it's less than what it was before we started. So we got an increase for a few months and then moved, you know. So they, you know, they paid us the same amount more to that point for probably five or six years, and then a little blip, and then back down lower than we sort of moved before, essentially.
Thank you. Appreciate all you for doing this.
Thank you.
Alden Whitehall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Tony and your board, thank you very much. Tremendous asset to the community. And I know you work very hard, and you're on several boards that you've come to for grants, and you've gotten cut. You've stayed the same. So staying the same is getting cut, you know, that kind of thing. But what I wanted to ask was that you mentioned several corporations giving you food, meats, et cetera. Does Costco in any way contribute?
Sometimes, you know, it's not on a regular basis. They'll pump us up and they'll say, you know, we've got five cakes that we need to get rid of, or something like that, or 10 cakes, you know. Not on a regular basis. We don't get a lot of donations from them. But, you know, a lot of that has to go through corporate with them, you know.
So many things are dated, and what do they do with the data stock, you know? And it's got the red tape all the time. But thank you again for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Alden Whitehall. Alden Beatty. Alden Whitehall, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Would it be, I was looking at some of the paperwork he handed us here, but your total operating budget, is it around like 600, 760,000, right? And the city gives, or we give 80,000. So it's not a lot, apparently, your total operating budget. You're, I know that a few years ago, I say few, it's probably been a while, you hired a fundraising employee to help you, you know, get more revenues in. And, well, I would like to know, how is that working out? You know, I mean, what is the employee's salary? And then how much revenue has she brought in, say, last year?
Well, it's easy to say because we no longer have a fundraising employee. No, we attempted to do something part-time, and it didn't work out because really, really, the development people don't really work part-time. And they don't want to work, put the money, you want to offer them the money. But it just, it just wasn't trying to work, it wasn't working out. So she's no longer there.
Okay. Yeah, well, that answers my question for that. The one other thing that I was wondering about, and I, I know that you meet people in crisis situations, both singular and families and stuff like that. The building across the street that you have, like two-bedroom and three-bedroom and three single bedrooms, and it's basically, that's like a permanent housing. And what I was wondering is, would the people in those units, would they be eligible for, for like the public housing that the city of Milford has, you know, throughout the city? Would those, would those people be eligible for that?
In terms of income, they probably would be. The key about this supportive housing is that, again, they have to meet a criteria of being chronically homeless to begin with, which, which by pub definition means you've been chronic for a year, or you've had three episodes that were total here. And you have some type of substance abuse or disability or some other factor that you have to have both of those things in order to live there. So it's targeted for those people because those are the hardest people to house and to keep housed, which is why we have the case manager there assisting them. And the longer they're there, the more successful they are at being, you know, at staying housed because they realize their obligations and they like being there and they want to stay there. there. They're not, you know, they're not, there's no, there's no requirement for them to leave. That's why it's called permanent. They're encouraged now as, you know, as they do well, like that one woman who moved away. She was in a position where she was making up a little salary and her son, her older son was now contributing to the household, so she was able to move away. And that's what they like to see, you know, somebody that's on the progression, moving, moving to success. But there were some that are very stable, well, you know, they're stable, their issues are being addressed and they're happy and it's, you know, it works, it works.
But once they get established and, you know, they've been there for several months and they start to settle down, do they, do they eventually like, do they pay rent?
They pay rent, yes.
And is it a comparable rent that, say, the public or city housing would have?
That, it's, you know, it's based on their income, okay? If they have project-based vouchers that go with the project now for them, that are based on their income and so they, whatever they're, you know, they need is subsidized to that amount. They basically live in an apartment like you or I would, they pay their rent, they pay their utilities, they have their bills, some of them are working. And as a matter of fact, the woman that left the shelter six years ago went to work part-time and just now got another job, so she's actually working two part-time jobs. So she's doing very well. But they, you know, that's an independent living situation, but they always have that, that help there should they need it.
The reason that I ask is I, I wonder if, I'm not questioning your policies, I'm only just abstaining that, like, if, you know, at some point in time, a year or two, you know, the people that were living there permanently were to get themselves fully adjusted and have everything that they would need, where they could transition to the public housing, my thought would be that, you know, the housing that you have is more crisis emergency where, you know, you could get like a three-bedroom where you have maybe a small family that needs an emergency situation where they would be able to move in there, where it might be easier for them than anywhere else. So my thought was as if, you know, if there was a transition period that opens up over there for the more needy of the other people could really transfer to regular housing, I just wonder what your thoughts were on that?
Well, it's interesting you say that because originally, and that's right about the time I first came here, there was a real debate on the board as to whether they were going to move and that was going to be transitional housing or they were going to go to supportive housing. They decided to go to the supportive housing for a number of reasons and it probably in hindsight was a good decision because the state is fully supportive of supportive housing. They really don't want to, they don't want to have, they don't want to put any money into transitional housing anymore because they feel that it doesn't work. I may be of a different opinion, but that's, that's where the funding sources are and they want it. They want supportive housing because they want to keep people housed. You know, their major point is that they don't want to put people that are vulnerable in a housing situation and have them there for two, three, four months and have them fail, which is the idea of having that, that case manager there. So it's, you know, it's, it's supportive housing is the latest. It has proven to be successful and it's, you know, it's across the state. And of course, we don't own the property anymore, it's not our property, so we only provide the case managers there. And it's, you know, it's owned by, owned and properly managed by the networks of the crisis. So we don't have as much to say about what happens there anymore than, you know, when the project was fully built, we sold the property to them. So they manage it and they own it, so, you know, and they're obliged to, because of the funding sources, to maintain that as supportive housing. You know, who knows? Three, four, five years from now, they may say supportive housing is not working, we're going to do something else, but right now that's, that's the latest and greatest.
Okay, yes, and I would imagine they probably wouldn't be as supportive moving people in and out of there more quickly. What would happen to a family that would, you know, if you had a family of, say, three or four that would need, you know, that housing right away in a crisis? They would that be in the L. shelter or is that, and then is there a time period by which they would have to kind of open up?
Well, you know, we've always operated as a ninety-day program. However, the state would like us to move people in and out quicker and their goal is thirty days, which I can assure you is not happening. But right now, we're working with, regionally with that coordinated access network system. And we now have a lot more information as to where people have come from, where, you know, how many places they've been to, what their needs are. And we have more resources now than we ever used to in terms of being able to place people quicker. So if we couldn't take that family, they would be, you know, referred to another shelter somewhere else or the house of, you know, we even probably will reach someplace like that. And they'd stay there until, you know, we, we would all then work with that family to get them housed. So there's housing vouchers now and there before. There's a program called Rapid Rehousing, which is a limited, time-limited funding source that pays for housing for people on, again, on a time-limited basis. And there are the permanent housing vouchers out there that we can get people housed quicker than we used to and, and more, you know, and longer term. So.
Thank you.
It's better, it's better. Thank you for your concern.
Alden Beak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you, and thank you for everything you do in helping the less fortunate people in our area. The question that I have is, you mentioned that, you know, if the state federal cuts continue, you may have to reduce some of the meals that you provide to the people that come in the middle. How many people come in on a daily basis or annually, you know, in estimate that use these meal programs?
We serve over twenty-five thousand meals last year total. And that includes lunch and dinner. On a daily basis, we serve anywhere from sixty to seventy-five people at lunch and probably another thirty to forty at night. And actually, our board is now doing two dinners a month. They've decided to monitor their services and they're doing two dinners a month themselves. So we're trying to get as many other groups in there to provide new meals. The issue there then is some, some provide the food as well, but some use our food when they commit to prepare, so it depends upon who it is. So, you know, if, it's the staffing of that Meals to Go program that's the additional cost there. It's not, you know, it's really not the food, it's the, it's the staffing of that person. So the, the more meals we can get in the evening, you know, we might be able to phase that out without too much impact, but if, you know, it's going to be an impact, it's not a deny.
Thank you. Just one follow-up, you said there was staffing that it was a large budget happening or potentially continuing happening. Do you offer, a lot of times commercial kitchens, there's a lot of leftover food that happens that I don't know if it happens, assuming it does not happen as often in your kitchen. But do you give the people an option at lunchtime to pack up anything that is left over so they may not have to come back later on anything?
Not usually because we're concerned when they take it, how long it's going to sit out, you know. The department kind of frowns on that because they don't, you know, once it leaves our, our building and it goes, let's just say, to attend somewhere, we have no idea what the refrigeration is or how long it's, you know, it's out there without being refrigerated and it could go bad. We have concern, we do have other food that we do give out on a table, they can take certain items every day. So if we didn't do the Meals to Go anymore, they certainly would be able to have a food resource if, you know, if necessary. And there are food managers at churches as well, so.
Thank you.
Alden Beak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Good evening, Mrs. Dolan. Thank you for taking all these questions. I just wanted to focus on this potential cutback of one less meal a day. Now, you mentioned that your staff, the size of your staff has not changed in several years. Most of the food that, that you have is either, most of it is donated, but then you did mention the fact you used the term "your" food. So there is food that you actually purchase?
Well, there are certain things we do have to purchase that we wouldn't get normally, you know, like milk and spices and garlic, you know, things that we need to prepare the meal, we don't get that kind of stuff.
Okay, understood. So getting back to the staff part of it, how can you understand why that would be a detriment? In other words, it's basically the cut would be in the labor to serve the food, but I know that a lot of kids on a Saturday that are in high school, they'll go donate their time, you know, for different reasons. So are you shorthanded with volunteers? Is that why you have people from your board volunteering to actually serve food?
No. I will tell you that without a doubt, we could not function in a soup kitchen without volunteers. We have loyal people that come every day. The evening meal, you know, has, it has to have a professional there with whoever's handing out the meal. And that's, that's, that's the staff question I'm talking about, only for the Meals to Go program. Anybody who comes to prepare a meal at night without, you know, not Meals to Go, just coming in and preparing a meal at church or with or platte tech students or whoever, that, you know, that's not a direct cause to us. That's a savings to us in a sense. It's the, it's the Meals to Go that is, you know, that is the added additional part-time person that we, when we started Meals to Go about one, six, seven, six years ago, we hired somebody and that was funded for a couple of years by a foundation that program as a pilot was funded. And, you know, so she's, she's still there. I mean, she's the one who organizes the volunteers that she works with, she has a couple every night that comes in and works with her. But you have to have a professional there to, to prepare the bag meal and then hand it out once, two hours. And trust me, we don't pay a lot of money, so.
So this person is part-time to begin with and what I'm hearing is you would have to eliminate that person's night hours? In other words, that's all she works is at night?
That's all she does.
Now, what does that, what does that represent in dollars, this person's pay?
I don't, I'd have to look, I'd have to go back.
Is it?
She doesn't, I mean, we would not, we'd probably pay her twelve dollars an hour, twelve-fifty, I don't know.
Because you requested eighty-five thousand and you were recommended for eighty thousand. You requested five thousand dollars more, so I'm just trying to, is that to keep this person working? If worst-case scenario?
I was asked to develop three different scenarios depending upon the amount of cut. And it is the cut alone, like I said, it's the cumulative effect of all the cuts before these things would have to happen. I'm not trying to say that if, you know, if you didn't give us eighty-five thousand dollars, that I would cut the Meals to Go program. I'm saying the cumulative effect of what the unknown is right now on top of what the already known is, is going to start impacting us.
Okay, I, I understand. I'm just trying to get to the bottom line of what this one meal represents in dollars. When you say to me that you're going to have to eliminate one meal at night, what's the dollar amount?
Honestly, I have to go back and look, I don't want to bore you. Like I said, she works two hours a night, probably nine hours a week, and I think we pay her twelve fifty.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all your time and effort. Thanks.
Alden Beak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Tony, I know, you know, we talk about paid staff, volunteer staff, and I know a lot of organizations come in and volunteer to plate the dinners, the lunch at the dinners and to serve. I know I haven't been there through United Way. And I present a challenge at this board to call the office and to volunteer an hour, two hours on a particular day, to go down there and really see the operations because that would change, that's a mindset change. It's a challenge that I am putting forth to this board. Thank you.
Any more, any more questions, this is Beth Elshel Center. Seeing none, thank you, Tony, and your staff.
Thank you all for your attention.
The next department on our agenda is the four-six-one-zero-eight-seven-nine.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. What I, what we just handed out to you is each year I like to give a little bit of an overview of what we've been doing over the past year, at least the past fiscal year. So this little booklet presents by division of the Health Department, a little snapshot of what we, what we've done over the past fiscal year. We'll start with the Community Health Division, which is the area that looks at health education, health promotion, as well as disease surveillance and prevention. So you'll see a synopsis of the diseases that were reported to the Health Department. The little pie chart you see with the foodborne illness, those are illnesses, anything that's foodborne requires a little bit of extra follow-up on the part of the Health Department staff in order to determine potential sources, potential outbreaks. And those reports are often what kind of starts our outbreak investigations if we have any. Over the previous fiscal year, we had three foodborne outbreaks, and so typically we'd get anywhere from three to five outbreaks, but more reports throughout the year. The Community Health Division also is responsible for the grant management within our department, so we bring in approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars each year in grant funding, primarily through the State Health Department as well as some private foundations. And then on the bottom, there's some of the programs that we are able to conduct as a result of that grant funding. We have a regional asthma, home assessment program, the Children Parent Leadership Training Institute, which we had a hundred and fifteen graduates of that program. We currently, across the street, have a session running right now with eighteen individuals who are enrolled. And then our Emergency Preparations Division, which really looks at ensuring that we are prepared as a city to respond to any sort of public health emergency that comes our way. On the next page, there's the School slash Public Health Nursing Division. On the next page, there's the School slash Public Health Nursing Division, and I'll just draw your attention to a couple of things. On the top section, you'll see for the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen academic year, our school nurses had forty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine health office visits by students. So just as a reminder, those are not just for, you know, Band-Aids and tummy aches, those are also G-tube feedings, those are, you know, glucose tests for the diabetics. Any visits needed for students that have special health concerns are included in there. Over sixteen thousand medications and treatments administered by our school nurses within the schools, as well as the typical screenings, revision, hearing, et cetera. And then, of course, our school nurses participate on a variety of teams in the school setting, as well as working at our immunization center, providing immunizations to children as well as adults in the community. And then on that page, it is really our Environmental Health Division. And again, this is just a quick snapshot of some statistics and the primary areas where we focus our efforts, everything from Food Protection Services, which is, you know, the licensing for food service establishments within the community, to complaints that we receive regarding environmental health hazards, beach water sampling, which we do every week from Memorial Day through Labor Day, lodging, vector control. We're just about to tomorrow kick off our mosquito control season, so it gives you just a synopsis of how we're doing in that area as well. So if anyone has any questions regarding any of that or the budget in particular, I'd be happy to.
Alderman Bevan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. On page eighty-one, sanitarians. You see we have four, are those the people that do the inspecting, we'll say, or restaurant staff?
Correct. The sanitarians, all of what I described for the Environmental Health Division on that back page, all of that work is conducted by the sanitarians. So that includes food service inspections, hotel inspections, beach water sampling, complaint investigations, the gamut.
But you only have four?
We only, we have four.
Again, I'm saying you only have four.
Correct.
That do all that. I have one more question, and that's on seasonal temps. Last year you spent twenty-five hours, but now you're only spending five.
Right.
What did you have seasonal temps for last year that you don't think you'll need seasonal temps this year? And what do they actually do?
So I, as chairman, I try to think outside the box a little bit with the budget and we'll get our organizational structure. So as you all are aware, as of July first, I already, I also took over the oversight of the Human Services and Human Family Services Department as well. So previously, that seasonal temp, the twenty thousand dollars, was for a part-time community health coordinator who works at the Health Department and is responsible for grants management, disease surveillance, and a lot of the health promotion activities that we do at the Health Department. What we are looking at is we've taken the twenty thousand and put it into the miscellaneous professional fees line item, and we're looking to potentially straddle a consulting position between the Human Services Department as well as the Health Department in an effort to increase our grant sources and do some work over both divisions.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I noticed there's a line I know that's year after year for pest control. Could you just talk a little bit more about that program, please?
Absolutely. So that is for our mosquito control program that we have in the Health Department. It runs from April through October of each year. We work with all Habitat Services. They have had the contract over the past several years, and it's a comprehensive mosquito control program. They treat the breeding sites throughout the community, the storm drains, and they also, if we get complaints of standing water or mosquitoes in a particular area, they'll go out to that area and assess and treat if necessary. So that, that's what's kicking off tomorrow morning.
That's, that's great to hear. And also, does that program look reduced ticks at all, or more limeses?
We have not included tick treatment in that program, strictly mosquito control. We will be talking tomorrow, as many of you may have seen in the interviews, we're looking at a higher rate of ticks this season. We've already seen a tick in the ticks this season. So, so we are really looking to put out mosquito, just taking preventive measures and personal protection and that, but they do not have tick treatment.
Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, I have one, one more question. Ask me, how many years ago did they take the school nurses out of your question?
How many years ago did they take the school nurses out? Um, that's probably seven, eight years ago.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the Health Department? Seeing none? Thank you. While you're there, you're going to be answering questions for the Education. The next department we're going to be hearing from is Department number four, nine, nine, eight, Education, Health Services, and School Nurses, page ninety-five.
And the nursing question is remaining flat for this year.
Are there any questions regarding Health Services, VNA, or Educational Health Services, School Nurses?
Just, um, VNA, four, eight, two, one, just so everyone is aware, that is the, the service that the Visiting Nurses Association used to provide, the Visiting Nurses Association no longer provides the well-child exams in Milford. Milford was one of the last communities that they were working in, and they gave the decision that it was not a practical venture for them. And so what you see in the budget is we've requested twelve thousand dollars, which is for our community medical advisor to conduct well-child exams. And we looked at the average number of well-child exams over the past few years, and that's what came up with that number. So that's why there's been a cut from twenty thousand to twelve thousand in that budget.
Any questions regarding any of those food counts? Alderman Gina Tazza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Based on what you just explained to us about the medical advisor, is that the position that Dr. Carlson holds?
Correct.
So is this the stipend for him, or is this, can you just elaborate on that?
It is, and this is not the stipend. So the stipend you'll find in the four, six, four, zero, miscellaneous professional fee line item, and that's seventy-five hundred dollars from the city account. This is from the Health Services account, it is separate from that consulting fee, because that is not a service that he was providing for.
Okay, so there's a significant savings here?
Correct.
Okay, can you just explain that one more time, please?
It's all based on what we were being charged through the VNA versus what the exam would cost through Dr. Carlson. The VNA was utilizing the exam room at the Health Department, and they have the license for the exam room at the Health Department. Dr. Carlson will not, we're currently exploring how to get our exam room license so that he would be able to conduct the exams out of the Health Department itself, but for the interim, he will be conducting it out of his office, and the fee that is negotiated is what you see here, three hundred dollars times forty exams, is what we typically expect.
So whether or not the students are his clients, they will report to his?
Correct.
Practice in order to?
Correct.
Take these.
You will see, any of, any of the students who were coming to the Health Department will be able to go there. And the, the goal is that we'll be able to get our exam room license under the Health Department, and then you'll be able to conduct them on-site.
Whereas in the past, as you follow, Mr. Chairman, these were conducted in, in schools, in each individual school, or?
No, they were conducted at the Health Department once a month.
Okay.
And the VNA can start facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions regarding the food accounts, Health Services, and the Education Health Services? Seeing none, thank you very much, people, people for asking more questions, and thank you for all the.
I'm going to stay up here because I think I'm.
Yeah. And through you, now looking to the Service Department as well. The next department on our agenda is Department number four, eight, one, seven, Human Services Department, that's on page ninety.
Okay, so this is my first time out here for Human Services, Human Family Services, so I wanted to try to give you a little snapshot of that division as well. So what you'll see in the handout, the first page, is our Human Services area, which you'll see for fiscal year, fifty-sixteen, one thousand four hundred and seven Milford households were served with approximately a little over three thousand people within those households. We provide a variety of services, everything from energy assistance to rent rebate, Cooper curls, corporate market vouchers, utility assistance, the financial assistance that we're able to provide to residents, primarily we really work with many of the agencies within the community in order to either caution, to coordinate programs that are already in existence, and then also to provide some direct funds as we're able. One of the areas that we've been working on, or that I've been working on over the last nine months since I've been there, is really looking at increasing the grant revenue that's coming in for the Human Services side. Years ago, I think there was a little bit more grant funding coming into that agency, and so we've been looking at trying to leverage existing funds in order to increase that grant revenue. And so we're doing it little by little and able to bring in some more funds that way. On the next page, you'll see a little snapshot of Milford Human Family Services, which is we provide some clinical services as well as prevention-based services, individual and family therapy, as well as groups are provided on-site at some of the schools. And we also do some prevention-based services, which are really programmatically based, everything from art therapy to family funding and some other programs that we run. And really, again, with Human Family Services, look to work with the Milford Public School System, Bridges, as well as other community collaborators in order to do the work that we do. And then finally, on the last page, you'll see a snapshot of our budget, as well as some of the funding coming in as far as the grants and revenue. I will add that there are some adjustments, some of the new things that have come in. If you look at the second box in the middle, the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, previously we were getting just utility assistance through that grant source. We were able to get some additional funding to the food vouchers this year, and we just submitted an application to get hopefully funding for rent mortgage assistance, as well as potentially emergency lodging vouchers as well. We also, for the Community Development Block Grant, we had received funding in the amount of five thousand dollars, and we were able to distribute that money quite efficiently and quickly because there was a need for that in the community. So we were just given an additional two thousand dollars to spend out for the remainder of the fiscal year for that program as well. Anyone else have any questions? And I'd like to introduce, Matt Simpson is the Administrator Assistant over Human Services as well, so she's very familiar with the budget too.
Alderman Chaw. Thank you, Chairman, thank you. Quick question, one, your budget is, is for us, you're showing a slight decrease. Are there cuts at the state? And I guess I was asking specifically about the Energy Assistance Program, or are there maybe cuts, or could you just clarify?
We don't have clarification on what, but they're saying there could be cuts, but we don't know what that would look like. For Energy Assistance, one thing I should add is that we work closely with TEAM in decorating and derby for that program, and what we were able to do this past Energy Assistance season is TEAM has one of their staff members on-site at Human Services, two full days a week, processing applications, and we, we did that, part of my task coming on was really to look at increasing efficiencies within the department. And in order for our two community outreach workers to be able to take more outreach appointments, we looked at, to TEAM to see if they would provide on-site services two full days a week so that we could increase our outreach services by our own outreach workers. So they were able to do that in preliminary conversations with TEAM, potentially if there are cuts to Energy Assistance. For us, it might take the form of not having that person on-site two days a week, maybe less, but that's really all we know right now.
Thank you, Al.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To the finance director. Rationally, we put it in four hundred, four hundred and ninety thousand, and they projected it as a four fifty, four fifty-five. Do you expect to get a, something back from this end of the year?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Bevan, not necessarily, don't expect to get something back directly, but I will phrase it that the city will get something back in terms of if Human Services has savings in their budget, they are able to retain those savings in the fund balance for Human Services, so that in essence gives it back, so to speak, to the city for future use.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Gina Tazza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. You mentioned that you were not as successful with receiving grants for Human Services as before in the past. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
That's not exactly what I said. So what I was saying is that I believe years and years ago, there were certain funding sources, particularly from the United Way of Graydon Haven, that were coming into the community for the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, and those sources sort of disappeared, and I'm not quite sure why, that was well before my time. And so what I've been working on is bringing those funds back into Milford. So, and again, the food voucher program is an example of bringing those, those funds back into Milford, and, and just last week, we applied for rent mortgage assistance through that funding source, as well as a few other programs, so that's what we're doing.
You mentioned the term leveraging your, your revenue.
Correct. So many of the programs, many of the grants that we work with require matching funds in order to obtain additional funding. So when I say leveraging funds, I mean taking our funds that we currently have and utilizing even grants that we're getting, such as the Community Development Block Grant funding, and using that in order to match funds to get from other sources.
Can you share with the members of the board, I know when we took ownership of Human Services, what the staff was, there was a time?
So at the time, there was a full-time director, as well as two community outreach workers, a program coordinator, a clinical coordinator, as well as part-time therapist and part-time.
Since we've merged, have we, has the city realized any savings in staff?
There is no longer a full-time director position that is being paid for. There is no longer a full-time director position that is being paid for. As well as on the seasonal town side too, we have some savings on that side for the Youth and Family Services side, as well as the Human Services side, so there have been some savings there as well.
Okay, that's, that's good news. And as far as getting money, it's just the economic climate? When you mentioned the fact that the night way, it's just, it's hardly, it's getting a little more difficult?
It's more competitive, and so for organizations that tend to be based in a meeting area or the Bridgeport area, and we're headed in that middle spot, so it's finding the right places to go to write the applications and search for funding and collaborating in that way. So, yeah, I think it's more competitive in nature, but I also think it's making the case that Milford has a need, and being able to present that case in an effective way.
And you also mentioned having people on staff from this fuel company, or this program?
Team.
Is that something that's relatively new, or was that practiced in the past as well?
Having someone from TEAM onsite is new. We did not have that in the past, as many as this season.
Okay, thank you.
Previously, they provide, they provide stipend, which you'll see in our grant funds. In the top, the top box, you'll see they provide a stipend of five thousand dollars. So, this year, they're doing that, as well as providing staff two full days a week.
And what is the advantage of having that person in-house? I mean, is it just more efficient, or?
Having that person in-house frees up the time of our community outreach workers to take on emergency outreach appointments. So, previously, in previous seasons, they would be doing the Energy Assistance interviews and application intakes, and so then they would be available to do other outreach appointments. So, now it's opened up their schedule, they'll be able to do more outreach.
Okay, thank you, Deepa. Thank you for your time and taking all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alden Anderson.
For you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Johnson. Wondering if you could add a little more specificity to how CDPG funds are leveraged in their distribution?
Sure. So, this past year, we received funding through CDPG for, to provide direct rent mortgage assistance to residents of Milford who've had an emergency, one-time need for rent or mortgage assistance. So, we were previously not receiving rent mortgage assistance funding through the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, through the United Way of Greater New Haven, and we did not have direct funds to be able to provide in order to have matching funds. So, this year, what we've been able to do is, since we have the seven thousand dollars through CDPG, we were able to submit an application to show that we were providing this assistance, and then to request additional funds through the United Way of Greater New Haven. And we also, again, applied for ten thousand dollars through CDPG, this go-around, because we, there's no, there's no shortage of need in that area, for sure. And we go through a comprehensive process through our case managers, where we assess the complete financial situation to, to really try to ensure that this is really one-time assistance, and that they're on a path to self-sufficient fee.
I appreciate knowing that, and if you were to walk up the number of individuals or families assisted through these funds, or to put that on file?
I believe for CDPG this year, it's been eleven, I would say eleven households that we were able to assist with the five thousand dollars, so that doesn't make any additional difference.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alden Baccarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. One quick question, could you tell me what the total budget amount is for that department?
Including the grant sources, including the grant sources, correct? I have to do some math. About five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Could you tell me how the, how much goes to payroll?
To outreach workers?
Well, we're talking about the, the human, Milford, uh, Human Resource Services, right? That department, right? I was wondering, and we now no longer have a direct, but instead of two, like, four or four and a half, four and a half employees, and it's just that, could you tell me about the pay bonus?
Sure. For, for the Human Services side, it's approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and for the Youth and Family Services side, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board? For Human Services Department? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you so much for all the work you do for the city of Milford residents. Next department on the agenda is department number four eight two six, Boys and Girls Department, page ninety-two.
Mr. Chairman, I do not see Megan Altimar, any representative, so I'll have to move up to another committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to the next department in order, the department number four eight one five, Bevan Graves, page eighty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, again, it's relatively the minimalist budget. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any, is there any questions from the board members concerning the Bevan Graves? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to department number four eight one six, Milford Forte, seventy-three, page ninety-two, page ninety, page ninety-seven. I don't see anyone here from that department as well.
They were here for the Finance Board's presentation. I will reach out and see if there's a representative that wants to come to, again, a subsequent meeting, but if you have any questions, I can supply some of the information that they provided to the Board of Finance, as can Peter, or I can see if they are available for the meeting on April twenty, I'm sorry, May third, or May tenth.
Does anyone have any questions regarding Milford Forte? No, using any questions, Mr. Mayor. We won't have to reschedule. Yes, there is. The next department on the agenda will be department number four eight two-two, Cemetery Association.
Happy to answer any questions.
Any, one of the board members have any questions regarding Cemetery Association? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have any question regarding that. The next department on the agenda will be department number four two one zero, Finance Department, page thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to members of the board. Give a moment to allow, we have four of our five division heads here tonight, and I'm very pleased to have them here and thank them for their time coming out this evening. I will introduce, we have at the end of the table Dan Thomas, our city assessor, our city accountant, Ariane Swift. We also have our new city treasurer, who joined us in December, Michael Antoniselli, and our new tax collector, Mary Ann Kleena, who joined us in February. And Fred Vialcar, our purchasing agent, apologizes, but he had a prior commitment this evening and could not attend. I'll begin by saying, we've concluded another extremely busy year in finance, as you've heard from our discussions over the past several months, we have numerous projects on our agenda, along with the day-to-day challenges we face in implementing a lot of the changes the city is doing with the union contracts, with insurance. We are also proud, and we don't take for granted the accomplishments we've achieved year after year. I give a lot of credit to Ariane Swift, and all the work that she does for our comprehensive annual financial report, which leads to the certificate of excellence that we have achieved year after year. She does a great deal of work for that, among a whole host of other things that come out of the accounting department. Dan Thomas, his department has just completed a revaluation, and that's done every, I believe every five years, and that is a tremendous undertaking, which we do in-house, and Dan and his staff have dedicated a lot of time and effort to getting that done. Michael, as I said, joined us in December, he's been working hard to fill in the shoes, the big shoes that were left behind by his predecessor, Lee Nonsel, who was with us for well over, I believe, over seventeen years, and we were sorry to see her go, she retired, and Michael's done a great job, he's putting in a lot of time, learning the ropes, so to speak, and he's been doing great thus far. And Mary Ann as well, has been doing great, she's been adjusting well to her office, and she, you may know her, she used to work in the Health Department with Deepa, and she did a great job over there, and we're happy to have her in finance now. I'd like to thank these individuals and members of their staff for their talents, their efforts, hard work, and dedication, which I owe to the success of our department. I'd like to thank them for taking more than one look, several looks at their respective budgets, and working with me to keep the budget relatively flat. We've made some minor adjustments. Primary increase each year, as usual, are the contractual wage increases. I will point out an emphasis on the revaluation operations line item. We have pretty much flat funded that over the past several years, and there was always a given year after several years have passed when we needed to increase that, but because of budgetary pressures, we, we did not, and we tried to rely as much as we could on funds in the reserve fund, in Fund Forty, but as of now, that fund has been depleted, it's actually on the verge of going a little bit below zero, so it's important that we at least fund that amount that you see in this budget. With that said, I'd like to thank the board for their support in supporting our department, and providing us with the resources and the funding needed to do our jobs, and to do the important work that we do for the city. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have for me, or members of the divisions here present. Thank you very much.
Any board members have any questions for the Finance Department? You've done such a great job, Peter, you and your staff, and all the questions have been answered over the, over the, over the time that we spent with you, so thank you very much. Thank you, staff, as well, for all the good work you do for the city. You might as well stay there, because we're gonna be opening up to the next department, which is Board of Assessment Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I will, we can allow Dan to remain to cover Board of Assessment Appeals, and I bid a good night, and thank you to Ariane, Michael, and Mary Ann for coming. Happy good evening. Thank you.
Any board members have any questions for Dan Thomas? Board of Assessment Appeals?
Mr. Chairman.
Alden Bevan.
For you, I just wanted to compliment Dan, you, and your staff on providing what outwardly appears to be a seamless reevaluation process. I know that it was tough, and a lot went into this particular process, and you even made a decision to leave Milford at one point, I guess, and so welcome back is in order, but I just wanted to compliment you on the way that the process was handled. The decision was made to do it in-house, and it was done so very professionally. Congratulations.
Any more questions regarding the, Alden Vitale?
Thank you, Mr. Chair for you. Dan, is the board extremely busy with appeals at this point? Follow through.
Yes, it would depend on how you define extremely busy.
Busier than last year?
Absolutely, just because of the reassessment project always generates...
Okay, then my question is...
Probably, the, in comparison to the rebound five years ago, would be a good basis.
Well, that would be, that would be the case. I would imagine every year, every five years, you get more and more greater appeals, I would...
Actually, the opposite is so, at least inside man here. The first time we did it was two thousand and six, and if you recall, the increase in values from two thousand, two thousand and six was two, two and a half times for most properties, which generated a lot of excitement. To the two, for the Board of Assessment Appeals, about a thousand appeals. We did a reassessment again in two thousand and eleven, where values decreased on average fifteen to twenty percent across the board, which generated still about six hundred appeals to Board of Assessment Appeals. This year, we're slightly under three hundred, and the average, I guess, assessment pretty much stayed flat, with an exception to that, and the bulk of the appeals that the board does have are owing to commercial and apartment complexes.
Okay, strictly staying with residential, could you walk me through a process as to house B on Street A, why does that tax go up? On the residence, on house, on residential house? How, what determines, what do you do to, say you, raise that taxes of that house?
Right. But we don't intentionally set out to raise the tax. Our job, through the statutes, are to come up with an estimate of the fair market guide property, and so using generally accepted mass appraisal techniques, we go about a full analysis of all property sales that occur, say, a year prior to the date of evaluation, which every five years is always October one of the year of reassessment. And so thorough analysis is, it's an ongoing process resulting in, in a determination of investment and value for each individual property during reassessment, then that result then of an increase or decrease in the tax, then it's owing to budget process, please simply determine...
Right, I understand. Some of that I understand. But if you're, if you're doing a total assessment, that doesn't necessarily mean that you visited every residence, does it?
To the degree of a street review, yes. What we call a drive-by, a windshield appraisal, we do that at every reassessment.
So, if somebody comes to me in my district and says, hey, nothing has been done to my house, and the assessment has increased, the houses in the, in the, in the area haven't been out of whack, as far as selling prices and so forth, help me understand that process. Why does one house assessment go?
That could be owing to any number of factors, and we would have to look at a specific problem. And I would, if I were you, I would encourage them to speak to me, and anybody to come there.
Right, I had done that, and yet, nothing has been done to that house, and the house when the increase in the assessment went up. So, that's what the understanding was?
Right, as you said, they could be owing to a number of factors. A different araser at a different point of time, or different market data, is going to come to a different conclusion than they would five years prior. And that's going to be the case for every property, I mean, I don't know of any property that actually stayed the exact same as it did last time.
That was the case, that they looked up the assessment, and a couple of properties stayed the same, and theirs went up, that was the concern.
Right. I would need specificity, individual property, and to, if any question...
And the process, the process would be to call the office and make an appointment? Is that... Thank you.
Any more questions? Any more questions regarding the Board of Assessment? Alvin Ginacchio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, good evening, Dan. Dan, or maybe the question might go to Mayor Blake. What do we actually save by conducting the revow in-house, rather than, you know, bringing in an outside firm to do that type of work?
We've looked at the costs of privatizing, and a lot of other municipal authorities throughout the state. It's actually a pretty similar cost. The big advantage that we have for doing in-house is we have more control over the process. There's more interactions between residents, property owners, and the city. You know, that's the big advantage. We have priced it out for privatizing like other municipal authorities. And we've, again, operated this system at least for the fifteen years that I've been involved in, and obviously more than that.
Does this process that we've been doing, does it take more overtime? You mentioned the fact that your staff have to drive by these houses and, you know, take a quick glance to see if there's been any improvements along the way. I'm just curious, is that becoming overtime loss?
That, that's part of the factor in terms of the cost. For some specialized properties, we do hire specialized appraisers, and we do hire other experts to look at particularly difficult types of properties. We've done that in the past. Hire people in terms of litigation process that we're going to be going through right now, with the approximate three hundred different properties instead of filing appeals. Some of those appeals would be dispensed with at the administrative level, and some will be, and fewer will be dispensed with at the judicial level. But there are costs, both legal costs and expert costs, appraisal costs associated with that process. Again, it happens in all one hundred sixty-nine communities across the state of Connecticut. We have Doug Dean investigating, you know, what the cost would be if you went wholly, you know, privatized versus, we were, right now have almost a hybrid system, where we have some of the assessor services are done in-house, and some we have the hierarchy.
Thank you. Any more questions regarding the Board of Assessment Appeals? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Dan, for asking all our questions, and for the great job you've done for the residents of the city. The next department on our agenda is Department Number 4115, which is for our orders, page fifteen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Carrie Rolland, one of the registrar members, and this is Deborah Fellenbaum. Unlike all the other departments in the city, this one has two department heads, and we are very happy to report that we do a very good job of getting along and agreeing most of the time. We also have four other members in our office, staff members, who do an excellent job at our daily work and helping us run the office. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank them for the great job that they do day in and day out, certainly around election time. I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the hundred and eighty-one poll workers who help us run elections on Election Day. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when they report to work at 5:00 AM and stay, some of them we get to leave a little after 8:00 PM, polls close, but there are many who stay well into the night with us and put in those sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen hours of work to make, to make it all come out right. So, I want to thank them publicly for a job well done in November. Presidential election is our big Super Bowl. We get the biggest turnout and the most eyes watching, so we're very proud of the job that they do, not just for us, but for the community in running our elections. As you probably will hear and have heard, tightening the budget is a, is a difficult prospect, when you're talking about things that are mandated by the state for us to do. We've talked many times to you about those mandates and the new things that we've been faced, the challenges that we've been faced with, with online voter registration, and now the new component with the Department of Motor Vehicles, as well as independent voting systems that were, were new in October before the November election. We've, we've faced those challenges, I think, very well, and although it's been tiring and difficult, I think we're, we're doing a pretty good job. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions that we have specifically to our budget.
Hello, I am the other head of the department, so I want to say that there are two heads, and so there's double scrutiny for everything that we do, including the budget. And I'd like to thank all of you for all that you do. I'm just sitting here for this little hard meeting, waiting for our turn. It's like, I can't really do this all the time, so I want to thank you guys. Kudos to all of you that are out there that we're looking at. I also want to report to you that Carrie and I have taken our certification class that was required by the Secretary of State for education. We had eight units of study, including office management, who I think that we are very frugal managers, and that you can trust us to, to give you a good budget and the money that we ask for. Also, we also have in our department, I have to give kudos as well, as she works on Carrie's side, that knows her, who knows a thing or two about a thing or two regarding budgets, and so she always keeps us on our toes as well, and she assists us at this time with the questions that we have, or what we've done in the past, or what we might have coming up. She always keeps us right on target, so that's always good. I appreciate that. And I'd like to say also, she's been on vacation last week, and so I'd like to say that I think we should operate within the recommendations that Mayor Blake had. I believe we can do it. We can work hard at getting that done, although we did have major increase in registrations last year during the presidential election. And there are some few things that we do need. For one thing, I have to mention to you guys, is a fireproof filing cabinet that we need to, at some point, get an additional one to house all of our registration cards. It's under statute that we have, they have to be in a fireproof filing drawer, and it took a lot, they all took a lot of abuse at the election time, and every day in and out of those drawers. Right now, we are tidying them up, doing what we call the active file cleanup job, just like to make sure they're in alphabetical order, that we can find those voters. Because if the system crashes for some reason, the online system crashes, those cards are what it's all about. We want to keep it in good order for the city of Milford, and that's it. The other thing, just not, no, somebody mentioned before about the unknown, the unknown of the early voting coming up, that we don't know what that's going to look like. So, we always keep a little buffer in there for money that they might need for that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through to the board. Deborah Fellenbaum mentioned it, but both of our registrars, a week and a half ago, passed the first exam. They're now members of the first class to pass the exam. That was brought about by recent state legislation requiring that all registrars now be certified to pass the test too in their first try. They were successful, so congratulations, and kudos to you two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I guess the old adage, two heads are better than one, workout in the registrar's office. So, both of you work amicably, which is a great feeling when you're Democrats and Republicans. I know there's a lot more stress on it, and especially on Election Day, you know, but a question would be, because you wrote it up, is that fireproof file cabinet in the ledger?
No.
And when?
Well, we're holding things back, but, and I think that's, we always live within the limitations that we have. But if, I'm just saying, going forward at some point, it's about $4,000, so we need to add that at some point.
But if you were to, if you were to request it, you'd have to put it in the budget, so that would be one that would be visible to us. If we were to cut it, then it would be there next year and following year until the guy approves. And yet, it's something that is extremely important, because you have to save those archives, and I happen to share it as a fireproof. Thank you.
Yes, and I just wanted to add that we added 2,000 voters to our rolls leading into the November election. So, in the midst of it, I don't think we recognized how great the increase was until we got to the end, and the budget process had already begun. So, I think it's more of a, see you next year. We'll be in with a fireproof cabinet, fireproof cabinet, that it will be on your minds next, next year.
Thank you. Alvin Vincenzo.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I'm wondering how you plan to conduct a canvas of voters this year. Can you touch on that? Is that a physical process, or are you using a postcard system? What's your intention?
We use the NCOA, the National Change of Address System, and that process begins at the end of January and runs through May, where we, you know, we're required to do a certain number of mailings. If somebody doesn't return it, we have to do a second mailing, that kind of thing. So, we do that throughout that time period, as we do every year.
And then you had mentioned mandates from the Secretary of State or the Legislature, the big one being there may be early voting in the off end. Are there any other potential mandates in the next year to the Legislature or the Secretary of State that consider?
The early voting is the biggest one that we're on the lookout for, just in terms of being able to mandate and how we're going to do that. There's nothing else awfully significant on the, on the legislative agenda that we're aware of at this time.
Thanks very much for being here, and thanks for all you do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alvin Vincenzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. You already mentioned that within the combined office, there's six people, but there's only four on your budgeted amount for wages. The other two, where do they fit in? Are they seasonal temps?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. So, looking at your, your budget line items here, it looks like everything was recommended, other than the seasonal temps, you were requesting more money for that and overtime. And that's pretty much par for the course, right? And if those things come to fruition, you can always transfer money over and, you know, help out with that. But for budgetary reasons, they're pretty much flat.
Yes, that's correct. We just find that the workload has increased tremendously over the last eight years. When online voting registration came into play, for example, it was supposed to save us time, and then we're not finding that to be the case. And there's multiple reasons for it, but I can go into them if you want, but it's not saving the man-hours, if you will. And we're very busy trying to keep up with that on a daily basis.
I think we had that discussion last time, that the online really isn't as efficient as the perception is.
It's convenient for the person registering, but in terms of getting them into the file cabinet and processing it through from online system to the CDR, Ascent of a Voter Registration system, it requires more time than if somebody filled out an application and handed it to us. That's what we're finding.
Okay, just to follow up, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the cards, with all the technology that we have available, is it still, by law, you have to fill out a card, you have to have that card, that original card on file? So, at any, so you have an archive of cards?
Yes, over thirty-five thousand of them now. And some of them have multiple pages. So, I moved since I became in Milford voter, and so I have a second card attached to my original card.
So, if I went to your office and requested to see my card, when I registered that, eighteen years old, my signature, you would have that, though?
Yes. Come and visit.
Okay. I may, I may take care of that. Thank you so much.
Alvin Pecorelli.
Thank you. Quick question. We have $110,000 for the elections, and we have a gubernatorial primary. What happened?
That's under election.
Oh, we have a guy in that.
Any more questions for the registrars? I guess you answered all the questions. Thank you so much for coming out and answering all the questions for our board, and thank you for the great job you've done for the residents of the city of Melbourne. The next department on our agenda. We could do the elections now, we could have a secret vote join you, and then we'll go back to the secret by itself. So, now we're going to be going to elections, which is the calendar for one, one, two, page fourteen.
Good evening, Attorney General, City Clerk. Our department is in charge of the elections, so we work hand in hand with the Registrar and Voters Office. So, I would like to defer questions to them or comments from them. We, I will reiterate, the early voting, we don't know how that's going to affect either, either office, because right now the City Clerk's office has all the absentee ballots. So, the assumption is that it may fall on the City Clerk's office, but we don't know it at this point. And if it's anything like absentee ballots, it takes a number, a number of man-hours to do that. So, unknown.
Any questions regarding the elections? Alvin Vitale.
Thank you. Again, I was wondering if, if we do have a primary for the governorship, that's going to cost us more money. Is that reflect, is, are, is this hundred and ten, does that cover us, or are we going to need more?
No, a gubernatorial primary isn't in April, so it would be, if, right, and yes, the hope would be that we could stay within this. And I'm going to quote, lend a stock here, if it doesn't, we'll be back asking for money to help us cover it, because we try to, we try to literally get within a thousand dollars estimate on what it would cost if we had both a primary and a general election.
Any more questions for the election department? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, which is the Department Number 4129, City Clerk, Page 22. Thank you again, Debra and Carrie.
Me again. I'd like to personally thank you for providing me the opportunity to address the board's government regarding the City Clerk's office budgets and fiscal year 2017, 2018. I know that the year comes is going to be one of the hardest challenges that we face, that you face in a number of years, and there will be some very difficult decisions that, that you will need to make. In our budget, you will notice that there was an increase in index and recording, but to offset that, we decreased in advertising. This is due to the fact of contractual obligations. This is due to the fact of contractual obligations with our current indexing and recording services for the past three years and from years previous, since we've had this new system in place. We've had to go to board finance for a transfer every year. Working with the mayor, this is how we made amends, because we usually do a transfer out of that account into another account. So we believe that doing this beforehand, this will eliminate that process, and we won't have to go to board finance again for that service. I can assure you that the budget in the City Clerk's office is very lean. Our office, as you know, is the guardian of the city records, and it's a conduit to the state of Connecticut and their ever-changing laws and mandates. Although we have made great strides in technological procedures, we are still in need of technological reform. However, the undertaking to do so is very costly. Much of our equipment is antiquated. The budget that we are seeking is to maintain status quo. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer them. And my sincere thanks to each one of you for all volunteer man-hours that you put in. Thank you.
Questions regarding the State Clerk Department? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems every year, your security system comes up, about $7,500. It seems like every year it comes up and every year it doesn't make it through the mayor's recommendation or the board of finance. Is that something that we really need? Or is it something that you're just wishing for, or is it a real problem? Because as I go into your office, I see people going into the vault area, and I know there's no security there. So they could be taking pictures and doing things that we can get money from if we could prove that they were doing that. And it would be a shame if someone was actually taking stupid documents.
It's happening more and more frequently. It is my wish to put a security system involved. I believe that in our whole corridor, that building, there should be security. I know the Board of Education just installed security at their end of the way. I think it's more appropriate where we are. I have been working with Ma'am Lake and Slade Warner and Omni and the Police Department. We have come up with a solution for my office. I know the board of finance, Ma'am Lake talked about installing a security system through the whole corridor, hoping that comes to fruition. I believe that you can have some funds out of updates for our center.
Mr. Chairman, through you, told him Bevan, there is a security upgrade project going on, not only for our City Clerk's office, our tax office, approbate office, and that little corridor right there where the Census offices is as well. And Public Works is spiraling. Some of the infrastructure, working with our Police Department and the various departments and departments.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions regarding the City Clerk Department? Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick follow-up from Alderman Bevan's question to the mayor. Is there any kind of timeline on this security update?
We have our Public Works Director here, but he would probably have to ask our building superintendent, Slade Warner, who is handling the project. We could ask our Public Works Director, do you know the timeline of the project, the deliverable dates? We can get that to you.
Alderman Beadie.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you. I have in my notes the same thing, the security system in the vault areas, the documents. She said there's an inquiry, so do we need that for... I have missing documents.
So maybe basically in taking the pictures. We're finding people come to us every other day and take the pictures, even though we have staff to assist them. And we know that there's certain people that know that they're not supposed to take the pictures, and they've been told time and time again. And I know at this time, one of the suggestions was to have delete your phones in the basket, but we really don't want to be responsible for that.
And are you satisfied with the timeline and that a few years was a big concern?
Well, I think we've been considering better.
Thank you. Alderman Bevan.
I just want to quickly follow up. I'm supposed to know this, but what's the problem with the photographing documentation? Is there a state law, federal law, or municipal?
We collect keys about a day on our way up there. And maps are $3. We just found someone last week taking photos of maps. He has your camera on like this.
So the issue is that there's any law against it, but it's supporting the ability to collect the fees? Is that correct?
Either state law.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Joanne, I mean, once you're finding this happening with individuals, can you not permit them to go into that vault? I know, but again, they're reading the law. Are they talked to? Are they communicated with?
Several times.
And they still disregard?
I think the next time, this particular person, we're going to have to just follow them now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Joanne, I was just thinking about this, you know, I'm on the ordinance committee, and I just wanted to maybe ask the mayor if there was any enforceable penalty that we could probably maybe enforce in ordinance. If you were to catch somebody and, you know, if it was a $50 fine or something like that, you know, that might, you know, help with, you know, that continuing to happen over and over again. That was my first thought. And you mentioned about the advertising that you're mandated, obviously advertising. I see you advertise consistently in the paper, and I know it's really, really expensive. So since you're...
We're hoping that the State Clerk do something about the advertising fees that we can do online advertising rather than in print, which would be a lot less expensive. But right now, it has to be in print.
Okay, so you mentioned that you continually have to request for more money and transfer, and you feel you would be much better suited to have the money upfront than have any type of delay. So I'm guessing by you asking for $9,500, it's $3,000 more, that this is a real cost?
I believe...
This is something that you've put a number on?
Advertising went down to $6,500.
Right, but your $9,500 request is...
So the transfer is going to be to the next account, so to go.
So I guess my question is, when does it come? When does it make sense for us to like budget a line item such as this, knowing that the City Clerk actually spent those dollars and year after year, we continue to underfund it?
Well, we moved money this year into the indexing and recording. And you see previously, we budgeted $12,050. And the year before, the actual cost was almost $16,000.
Okay.
So that's why I asked for $16,000 for the upcoming year, so I wouldn't have to go for that transfer.
Okay, I see. Well, that makes sense. All right, thank you.
Any more questions regarding the State Clerk Office? Seeing none, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you do for the citizens of Wilford and the city of Wilford. At this point, the next Department, the Public Works Office, count number 4420, page 63. Mr. Chris Sale.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to be able to come before the board and discuss the Public Works budget. I'd also like to introduce Bill Mears. He's an assistant director. He started out COVID, and I don't know if everyone's aware of Bill. So I know it's been a long night, and I know people probably have questions on the budget, so I'm open to your questions.
Alderman Bevan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, Chris. One of the biggest things that I get called on ever since the budget came out, it's not a lot of people, but it's a good number that actually call me or email me. And it's based on the assistant directors increase. Seems like everyone else in the city is giving about 20%. But he's giving 10%. Could you might be able on that?
I'm sorry. I apologize for the new last question.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Assistant Director Sale can answer that question. You're referring to Department 4420, Assistant Public Works Director. The reason that the increase is higher than you would expect is for a number of reasons. One is the step increase from step one to step two going into the new fiscal year 2017, 2018. The other reason is that the non-rep ordinance, which almost mirrors the settlement of the union contracts, if you will, the wages had to be adjusted from the prior levels at 20... I believe the contract had expired in fiscal year June 30th ending 2015. So you have an increase going for fiscal year 16, 17, and then this 18 as well. So that's why the 2017, 2018 amount is higher due to that, the compounding of the wage increases as well, along with the step increase.
Thank you, Beadie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions regarding the Public Works Office? Seeing none, move on to the... Alderman Beadie.
Thank you. Thank you, three. Welcome to our new assistant director. I did speak on the phone. I have a question about the traveling conferences. It seems very slim. I know you're trying to keep the budget down, like you have a new assistant director and benchmarking with other public works enterprises and other small cities around, a few need more for travel and conferences.
We could always use more money.
Always ask for the ones turning down, but it's not there.
Yeah, the mayor asked us when we started budget to keep it at zero, and we felt... We have a lot of opportunities within the state, partnering with other municipalities, Kermun and other organizations that we can get value. We would like to be able to have the opportunity to go and so on. But at present time, we thought it made sense just to stand where we were.
You want to hear the list? What is Kermun?
Kermun's the insurance company, but they do a lot of presentations. We just went to a team building one that was free for our group. And that's what we try to go after, the ones that have good budget. Also went for a pavement preservation one up in North Haven that was done recently again and go charged to missing city workers. If there's something that we really think that we would need, you know, the mayor's always been open to looking at that. Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Assistant Public Works Director. Good evening. Can you just share with the members of the board, give us a brief overview of your daily responsibilities?
Sure. When I first started the job, I got involved in the operational component, primarily having to do with the highway department, the garage, sanitation department, and parks. Now I'm sort of moving into working and helping Chris with some of the larger projects in the town, which I think is more of an educational thing, bringing me up to speed on everything that Chris has to deal with on a daily basis. But I think it would be in the best interest of the community if at some point we actually split our efforts and one of us focused on operations, while another focused on projects.
Just to follow up, I was under the understanding that you were going to be more operational based in that aspect, so is that the case? And we're just kind of feeling our way into other things?
Well, I'm a strong believer that we should have a succession plan. It's one of the things I think the city lacks with people when they leave. They leave, they lose a lot of institutional knowledge. It's not just for Bill, it's also for the supervisors. We try to get them into the fold so people understand. We just had a pavement company come in. We had the frontline people actually come in and watch the presentation so they understood why we're thinking of changing how we do some of our pavement preservation from segue away. But just it's important that people understand where everything is and how the city runs. And that's the important thing. Anyone who starts a new job knows how hard it takes to get your feet underneath it. And Bill's done a tremendous job, but there's a lot to learn. This is a big city, we have a lot of responsibility, so. And then just the day-to-day calls. It's been a big help for me to be able to share, you know, I'm still part of the operational part, but to help when there's a complaint issue that we can address. It's all mundane things, but it's things that people respond to, and we're trying to, you know, be very customer service.
Alderman Beadie mentioned the conferences, and you happened to mention, Chris, the team building. Now, when you attend that, is that just you and the assistant director? Is it just the certain people that attend these conferences? Or is it...
It's a combination. This past one, Bob Trap, Keith Foyle went to a sign seminar, taught us about the new regulations with signs. It's one of the things that we're trying to instill in our staff, is to go to these events. And it does take up... It takes us out of the day-to-day work for the day, but I think it's very beneficial. And I think the staff appreciates it. We all understand the tight constraints we're under, especially with budgets, what's going on, where it's going to. So, you know, we have to think how to be more productive, and I think these seminars have the opportunity to get us somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions regarding the Public Works Office? Seeing none, move on to the next department, count number 4421, highways, parks, page 65 through 68. Any more members have any questions? Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Chairman Beadie. I do have a question. Make sure I understand what I don't know in trade maintenance is, what that entails.
So road and trade maintenance is usually catch basin repair. Presently, what we're doing, some of the areas that we're highlighting for paving, right now is West Ave and the West Ave area, so we're going in there, changing out catch basins, fixing pipes, try to do it before we do the paving. So it's a need throughout the city. I believe we have over 7,500 catch bases in the city, so there's a lot of work to do about it.
And you had a budget, obviously, of 200,000 to do this, and it's obviously been cut to 30,000. How many do you do for 30,000? I'm sorry to be so...
It all depends if it's a full construction or if it's just a... It all depends if it's a full construction or if it's just a top. A top's usually, if it's a galvanized top, I believe it's about three hundred and twenty-five dollars for a galvanized top, plus our labor and miscellaneous mortar and bricks. So it's not that expensive. If we have to do a fully reconstruction, materials are right around a thousand bucks.
And I'm sorry, this, this final, I mean, do you have a priority list? Are there areas, this is really a priority. I know you've worked in some in the area that Point Beach area, which I know. But are there a priority list? Are we able to take care of those where they really need to be done?
We try to respond to when we have a priority. If there's a, there are issues where catch bases collapse or have a sinkhole there, we try to respond with a timely fashion. I'm not saying we're going to be perfect, but, you know, it's, I think one of the frustrations for myself is just trying to get our staff in the right place at the right time. And an example today, we had our building maintenance crew that was down at the Sign Lake School because a sump pump failed over the holiday weekend, and it flooded up with oil. And so it is every day. It's exciting because there's something new every day, but it's challenging too, because a lot of the things, the general maintenance things sometimes fall behind. And one of the things with the new MS four, which is a deep requirement, is we need to make sure that we have a full count of all our catch bases. It's a big job. That's what I'm thinking you want to start doing. We just started or kicked off, pardon, not pardon actually, most of Bill's help, a GPS system within the city. About, I think it's about eighty vehicles, seventy-five vehicles. And it's been important. It's been very helpful for us to see where our staff is. If there's been issues, we've had people complain about speeding, and we've been able to pull it up and say, no, the truck wasn't going that fast. So it's been very beneficial. I think the technology is where we're trying to get in the city. And it's important. There's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you a lot. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Bevan, you got your hand up?
Yes, thank you.
Right. Mr. Chairman, you were waving and waving around.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
I have two questions. This board just bonded over four million dollars for road and asphalt. You have thirty-five thousand dollars here for asphalt. Is that for something other than, say, roads?
Yes, Alderman Bevan. That is for general maintenance throughout the city. Pot holes. It could be for the additive we use for our pot hole machine. It could be for asphalt if for some reason the asphalt machine isn't working and we go. But just general maintenance throughout the city, the four million dollars we authorize and bonded, that's for what I classify big project, big road work, and paving preservation that we do.
My second question is, what did it positions for highway and parks? Are you in all your positions filled right now?
Presently throughout all of the parks, we're down about twenty positions.
That's twenty just in this one department?
And throughout the whole public works. So that's wastewater, sanitation, highway parks, building maintenance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Vianciasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, to Director Saley. Mr. Saley, so this department, for instance, and its position, as I know that you're working on alternative budgets. Is there a possibility that some of these positions that are presently being funded but aren't filled will come off entirely out of this, out of this budget, come off as line items? Was there any discussion?
I believe, Alderman Vianciasio, that would be one of the options. Depending on what happens in Hartford, where it comes back, I would hope people, and I know you as a group understand this, there's a tremendous need in the city. It's not, we don't take it lightly when you talk about reducing staff. An example, our staff, I think, does a tremendous job under very difficult and challenging times. And an example, our parks, our highway division, Parks Highway Division, has taken on two major projects in the last three months. And we're the general contractor funders of Founders Block, and the other one is the Royal Point sidewalk. These are major projects that have kind of been out there for a number of years. Richard Moss, George Crew, have done a tremendous job, going in and doing a lot of site work, moving a lot of material, using the city's equipment, and then bringing in contractors for work that we can't do in a timely way. So it's definitely no effect. But I think the whole state is a mess. So we're going to do the best we can for this space as well.
Just another question, Mr. Chairman, through you. Getting back to the catch bases. Now, is that also driven by when you're going to pave a road, you're going to, obviously, if you're going to pave a road, you're going to take inventory of the catch bases on that road and fix them prior to paving. And the other alternative is if you have a situation where a catch basin actually fails. So I'm just, it's kind of a hypothetical question, but what's the life of a catch basin? What determines a catch basin that needs to be repaired?
It's a, this is actually a very good question. The life of a catch basin should be, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years, as long as it's done properly, and water doesn't get into the mortar, into the product. Some of these old catch bases that we have are, they look to be over a hundred years old. Actually, one happened to show you, not that, but there was one around thousand points. It was done tremendously, the workmanship on was amazing. But it should be a long time, as long as salt water doesn't get into your salt water. That's, that's a detriment to the catch basin. And if water gets behind somehow, like the asphalt fails above it, and the water gets between the catch basin and the block.
So that would cause a sinkhole, because now it's not being transferred into the pipe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Chris, I got a couple of questions. Card number 4113, you have a snow removal, and you have sixty thousand dollars. Then, the next page, you have ice control expense, another sixty-five thousand. And then you have sand, ten thousand. Can you give me the difference between the three? Do you know the other?
The, the
Similarities?
Each other. The snow removal lookout 4113 is for overtime for my staff. That's, that's what that gets paid out of. So we, if a snowstorm hits during regular hours, it's during regular hours. But when it hits into overtime, that's what that money will come out of. The salt component, which is ice control expense, is strictly the salt that we buy, the brine we buy. And truthfully, we normally blow through that sixty-five grand. And then we use Town Aid for the difference, which is our grant money from the state. I think this past year, it would probably somewhere in the ballpark, it was a fairly light year, but I think we spent about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in salt. And then CN, we normally make a transfer because we're not using CN anymore. We're putting it, we're using salt. We get a little bit of CN every so often, just as a backup, just if someone needs it. But we've got away from using CN down the road. So it'd be less work for us with our catch bases. We used to put about a thousand yards of CN down the road every, every winter.
The other question I got, I'm sorry, the other question I got was getting to cellphones for eighteen hundred dollars. Can you explain what exactly does that entail?
Sure. It's the cellphones of all the supervisors in the department. For the year, it's actually, it should have, we should have decreased it because we brought in some other, other components with our GPS, but that's something longer on in the mayor's office. But yeah, cellphones for all the staff, all the supervisors.
Notice that's the last in the other departments. I was wondering what, what that entails. So it's all the supervisors get a cell phone, city cell phone. And chainsaw, one last question, chainsaw. Do you have there forty, forty-two hundred dollars for exactly that?
That's, so that's all for our tree crew. We try to buy a few tree chainsaws. There's a lot of heavy uses, especially with the crew that we have now that are doing a lot of work. Chains, the actual chainsaws, the other maintenance, other work.
Thank you very much. Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Welcome to the city building. Just, that, that account bothers me, that forty-five fifteen, that road and drain maintenance, a cut of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is that just arbitrary, or is it projected that you're going to have less work to do next year? Cutting an account by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is really significant to me. You know, so how did, I don't know, was it just arbitrary? Or less work?
Mr. Chairman, through you, it was not a reduction. It was continual, continuation with the historical amount that was provided in that account. So it was the same as last year and the same as the year before. I think that this is just a small portion of the money that we utilize throughout the course of a year for the maintenance of our storm drains and catch bases. We replace a lot through grants and through Town Aid Road and through other forms of funding.
Help me to understand that it's the same?
Excuse me. Through you, Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, and maybe this will help the mayor or Director Saley address the question. There was a note in the budget request that the two hundred thousand was related to an MS four permit. There was a component for sweeping and also for catch basin cleaning, if that helps.
So is there more into that? And that we don't have to do that? Is that the cut? It's fuzzy. It's like fuzzy math. It's fuzzy understanding.
Well, I don't think it's fuzzy math or fuzzy understanding.
Well, explain it, Mr. Saley.
So the new MS four is a requirement that DPD is requiring, that the city, all cities in the state are required to do. And part of the MS four is to require us to make sure that all our streets are swept at least once a year, and then major areas are swept more. And also every catch base, it was going to be every catch base had to be cleaned within the time frame, but they modified that. So when we were doing the budget, we anticipated getting rid of the catch basin material, getting rid of the sweepings, and doing the sweepings. And we put that number up. Now, as the mayor said, there's other monies available, which is Town Aid. And in this budget climate, when the mayor asked to keep it, keep us at the zero, I understood why. That's what we went for.
So help me to understand, MS four, when you refer to MS four, what does that mean?
It's a stormwater requirement of two D.
And that would be required to sweep the streets, et cetera, et cetera, and keep it at somewhat of a maintenance, kind of clean, kind of?
It's, it's an unfunded mandate from the state. That's as simply as I can put it, that it's another requirement that the state's requiring us to do, that they're not funding it. And we're trying to adhere to that requirement. It's not easy.
Okay, so we have greater unfunded mandate mandates, but we cut the budget?
I'm sorry to hear that.
We have more unfunded mandates, but we're cutting that area because we have other ways we pay for it?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, again, we're not cutting it. We're funding it, at least the proposal is to fund it at the exact same amount that we have funded it at least for the last four to five years, which is thirty thousand dollars. My point is that in addition to the thirty thousand dollars that we use for storm drains and catch basins, we have other accounts. The Town Aid Road account, which is a grant that we receive every year, that we have some flexibility. It has to be used or utilized to maintain the conditions of our roads. This is one of the areas that we utilize it for. There's also several grants that we've had, both through CDPG, through FEMA, through other grant-funded sources, as well as other local funding that we've had for storm drain projects where we replace catch basins. We have probably over the course of the last three years, replaced more catch basins, especially the longer shoreline neighborhoods than we have in the last twenty years combined. We have done a tremendous amount of storm drain replacement over just the last couple of years. Again, that was funded through grants that we've received. So we have been making forward progress, but we do have a lot of progress because in addition to the seventy-five hundred catch basins that we have throughout the course of the city, the state also has catch basins on state roads that from time to time we have to maintain. We did just hire a engineering firm to catalog again all of our catch basins so we know the conditions of each. Three years ago, we did this purchase of a brand-new backhaul truck, which has the capacity to suck and jet out between eighteen and twenty-eight catch basins, depending if it is both sucking or jetting or just jetting each day. We have a crew that works that vehicle each and every day. So storm drain maintenance is something that we do a lot of. We have not underfunded that account. In fact, if I look back the last three years, and this year is already planned to do more storm drain catch basin maintenance than we really have done before.
Having said that, and the fact is that we did not decrease that account, then why ask for two hundred thousand dollars in the original request, when I can do much more and if everything is being covered?
If I can answer that, I thought I did, but maybe I wasn't clear. When we got the original MS four requirements, we thought it was prudent to put it in the budget. But on the flip side, if I don't put it in the budget, you'll ask why I didn't put it in the budget. No, I put it in the budget. You're asking why? And so.
Well, I think it's glaring when it's put in the budget and it gets cut to thirty thousand. So there, there's an explanation there as to why we're all concerned that it's cut. It wasn't cut, it's still staying the same. But the fact remains that the request was made for two hundred thousand. That's confusing. So, thank you.
Alderman Vianciasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, getting back to account five, four, five, one, five, the road and drain maintenance. So the mayor mentioned we have one vac truck. Was that two hundred thousand anticipating that we would have to outsource the vac trucks and have an outside company come in and maintain these catch basins? I mean, do we actually have enough? I mean, we have one truck. I know that we have, I don't know, maybe hundreds or thousands of catch basins. Is this something that we're able to do ourselves, or is this something that we need, you know, a contractor come in and help supplement?
Our goal would be combine that. We would work with our employees, but also bring in a subcontractor. If the state's requirements to make sure that every single catch basin was done once a year was impossible for us to do. And that was part of the issue, the two hundred thousand. It's since walked it back. You have to do it within a five-year period, but it's still a very labor, labor-intensive project to make sure. We first have to categorize where they all are. We don't even have that information yet.
Okay. And you mentioned on the record that moving forward, that we're not using CN anymore to deal with the snow and the ice. So we'll probably eliminate some of that vacuum. That's our buildup?
Yeah, that's, that's part of it. But we still have. There's a tremendous amount of leaf, decayed leaves, people blow things into the streets, they cut their lawns. There's still a lot of material that gets backed up.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions regarding the highway parks? Seeing none, go to the chair. You had your hand up?
Yes. Have my pencil up, Jim.
Again, confused now. Again, it was a different issue, Mr. Chairman. I didn't mind attention. And Alderman Bevan.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. My question is concerning rolling stock. We had a question this year for a truck. And I'm wondering if your rolling stock is going to be funded in a different manner, through capital projects? What's, what's the plan to replace deteriorating equipment to our equipment that's no longer functional?
Thank you. So one of the things I think I brought before the board is our fleet is obviously an aging fleet, and the mayor's worked very hard to, in this tight budget to try to get us new trucks. We just purchased two new trucks over in the fall, all through Town Aid. And the mayor's aware of the need. And depending on where the budget is, he's told us that he will entertain that opportunity, look at a truck or two this, this year.
And Mr. Chairman, through you, about fifteen years ago, we went through a change of how we funded. We used to have the rolling stock program as the primary source of funding vehicles and equipment. Then about fifteen years ago, we switched over to the vehicle acquisition program, where the majority of vehicles from the Public Works Department at least, excluding wastewater, is purchased at the end of the year, usually at the June or July meeting of the Board of Alderman. We fund that acquisition through a allocation transfer, depending on how much surplus we have. we have. And again, that's the, um, traditional way that we funded these big purchases, at least for the last 15 years. Wastewater is an exception because, again, they're not part of, uh, it's, it's a different, uh, bunch of revenue stream that they have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any more questions regarding highway parks? Hands, that's all, say anything? Okay, we'll move on to account number four, four, two, three, building maintenance, page 69 to 71. Any questions for our directors regarding building maintenance? Have you seen any? We'll move on to account number four, four, two, four, engineering department, page 72. Any questions regarding the engineering department? See enough who want to next to count, which is four, four, two, nine, general garage, page 74. Any questions regarding general garage? Paul McRae?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, just a, a quick question about the, um, the plot worker, or the plot students that are maybe coming in, helping in the garage. Um, do you perceive that that might help, uh, you know, reduce any of the overtime or anything, uh, that is expensive with the garage?
At the present time, unless it's an emergency, we're not authorizing any overtime in the garage. I don't see that reducing it or helping it. What we need, we'll, we'll use it if appropriate. Uh, it's not really the intent of, of programming the program is really to bring young people into it and, and have experience of being next to some of, of mechanics to show what needs to be done and how it needs to be done, working in a professional environment. So, uh, it, it really isn't meant to be programmed with, you know, learning, cutting your teeth on it, so, uh, I, I don't see that as part of that. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding general garage? See enough who open up on the next account, four, four, three, one, solid waste, page 76. Paul McRae, tell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the director. Mr. Director, how can you help us out and understand and elaborate on how our, um, solid waste one-armed bandits are doing regarding this collection?
Yes, thank you, Paul McRae. We rolled that out, and that was one of the reasons when Bill first came on board, he was on the phone under the bus literally, he was, it was a very big project. And I would like to say that I think the staff has done a tremendous job rolling it out. As you know, it was a major change. Um, I don't believe he had many complaints, um, considering the, the magnitude of the change. Um, and I think it's been very successful. I think we still have a long ways to go in bringing some more efficiencies into it. Um, but I, I think the staff has been very, very helpful. I think they've realized that the trucks are actually very inefficient.
What portion of the city is handling at this point? Continuously, or just, are you just experimenting all over the city?
Not, not, every, every, uh, obviously with our solid waste, we, we collect Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, Mondays and Tuesdays are more challenging weeks for the beach community weeks. Um, and those days, we have three of the, the trucks running, and then one rear loader. I'm sorry, four of the trucks running, but one, one rear loader. Um, and then on Fridays, we go almost, uh, four. I'm sorry, let me, let me re-say that. We have three of the rear loaders, God, I'm going to just pull this one up. Three of the one-armed trucks on Monday, Tuesday, and two rear loaders because of the tight communities that we're doing and trying to learn. We're going to pretty soon go to four and one. Um, and then on Fridays, it's, it's four, Thursday, Friday, four trucks, one arm and one rear loader.
So the issue that you haven't expanded to the whole city, obviously, is just you're concentrating in an area because they haven't been in mind, have you?
They, they should be there, they just haven't done yours?
Not in the area, no, because there, people are still putting, not, they're not even putting their, um, their totes out anymore, and you're just putting garbage bags by the side of the road. I mean, the totes are not being picked up.
That's the first I'm hearing of, so...
I've not seen one on my, on my street, remember?
Okay.
Thank you, as long as it's working, it's a success.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's been working very well. They're going out every day to the point that we now have, um, during fall weather, the recycling, which is a semi-automated truck where they tip off the bag, they've asked to use one of them for recycling, so I think this is passing.
And again, one of the questions way back when was, what about one-way streets? How is that being dealt with? Did you fill it?
That's, that's one of the reasons why we have our rear loaders still going out. They pick up the one-way streets, the dead-end streets, streets that, the truck is a little longer and has a little wider wheelbase, so it's tough to make some turns. Um, but these are all things that we anticipated, and as we grow, um, when we look to replace some of these rear, rear trucks, we'll look at using smaller single-axle trucks as opposed to dual-axle trucks, um, because the capacity, you don't need really the capacity, you just need to be able to pick up the tighter spots.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Paul McCasey?
Just a follow-up, quick question. So in those one-way streets where you, you can't use the one-armed bandits, so people have to physically pick up those toters to dump them in? Is that how it works, or just help me out?
Yeah, no, Mike, we, uh, what, what we have is we have what we call semi-automated, so there's a rear toter on the back tipper, so it'll be used for recycling, so it hooks up and tips it, so that, now you, you could, it'd be a little heavy to lift those, um, but no, it's, I was asking. And, and our goal, and we, they've made a lot of progress, but our goal would be to get, get it to the point where we'll have some smaller trucks that will do those tighter areas and, and getting the, the automated trucks to get into almost every area.
Thanks, thanks for putting that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Director Sayly, uh, being that we're on the subject of the one-armed bandit, um, are we doing any of the, any of these routes with one man in a truck rather than two?
We certainly are. And just to give you an example, I believe this budget, I, don't hold me to it, but I think we, we already reduced the staff at this department by two, uh, and there's a number of positions that haven't been filled, um, by the efficiencies of the one-armed trucks. When we first started in October for the first four months, um, we did have two men in the vehicles at times, and we still have two men in the vehicles when we feel the need, around holidays, the Fourth of July. Um, there is a learning curve. We have a ticket that we give to people if they're putting it in the wrong location to cans, and people still continue to put it in the wrong location. So, drivers have to get out of the truck, but as a whole, I thought it's been a very successful program.
Just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, so when I see two people in a truck, the second person is also a licensed CDL driver, I know he's operating the one-armed bandit, but he's, does he have, does he hold the license as well? Because I guess my concern is, I, I hope that he does, I guess that he's there training to operate the mechanism so he can become more, um, efficient and faster? Is that the, the idea?
Safer. Safer, more safer. But you're 100% right, when we first, when this contract took effect, I think we had six people that were just labors that didn't have CDL license. We since have, I think, two people retired, and the other four have gotten their CDLs or are in the process of getting their CDLs. There were some people that had never driven a, a commercial truck as a mayor, so they have been sitting, training, mentoring, whatever you want to call it, and then getting comfortable with the vehicle, vehicles, which are a man-made truck. Uh, but it is a big truck, and it's, there's a lot of responsibility. And we've got a few hit trucks, we've, we've hit a few things, and, uh, you know, as a learning curve, but as a whole, I thought they've done a tremendous job.
I do have one more question on this line item, the condo reimbursement. Is it more advantageous for the city to, rather than give back, say, a half million dollars in this account, to look towards picking up this garbage and, and disposing of the garbage? Wouldn't it be cheaper for us to handle it?
To be totally honest, I've never run the numbers to see what kind of, what kind of tonnage they, they do. Uh, there's some calculations you can do on how many, the average resident, I would say, produces a, a year or a week. Um, it's something that we probably should look at, um, but at the present time, I've never done that number, so I wouldn't be able to answer.
Okay, I would appreciate that if you looked into it, because I know there are some surrounding towns and cities that actually do that. So it might be, you know, it might be a big benefit there. Thank you.
I have, uh, one more question regarding, um, one of the biggest questions or the biggest complaints, I guess, in Alderman, is what are we going to do with all these residents that put their bulk trash out weeks before their scheduled time? Uh, you know, great job putting those little red stickers just on the, on the toters. That's really, I've got a lot of compliments on that, that's really working. Some people just don't read the original brochures that were given, when the totes were given out, so they're catching on pretty quickly, but this, the, the idea of not to trash weeks in advance of their scheduled pickup is really out of control. And, and, you know, we have a lonely town, and here comes summer right around the corner, it's Beach Community, and everybody's going down with visitors coming from out of town, out of state, and they look at that stuff. So do you have any plan as to how we can correct those people that are violating that?
Paul McVie, I, I definitely feel the same way as you, that it's, some of these people started two, three weeks ago, and our bulk isn't going to start until the first weekend of May. I would lean towards you and your, your, in the Board of Alderman, um, and to see what kind of ordinance or regulations you could put in to first educate, but then have some kind of punitive fine for people that don't listen. Um, it is amazing. The dump is open, the transfer station's open every day, so if you had something you needed to bring, um, but we have a percentage of people that definitely do, so I'd lean towards you, and you can see what you, as a group, can, uh, tell us to enforce.
If we were able to, I know you have to get the whole of those, uh, book of stickers for the five layers of the cars and recycling totes, we could get another book of those stickers regarding, oh, pickup violations. I, I, I for one would be happy to go around my neighborhood and start sticking them on their, uh, on their front door.
We could also call, uh, the Health Department as a polite component, and, and I've done that sometimes, there's been a few homes that started in, in February, and I'm like, wait, this is crazy.
Thank you for your, uh, for all of that effort putting into that, I appreciate it.
And, and, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, we do have, uh, we do have those calls going to the mayor's office and the Public Works Office. Uh, we treat them as a polite complaint, and our Health Department initiates action.
It's good to hear, Mr. Mayor. Paul McVie?
Oh, my, did you get that, Andrew? Thank you. Uh, thank you for the work that you do, it's an enormous, uh, job that you have. And sometimes the, the small complaints that come forward may seem trivial in comparison to the scope of the work, but nonetheless, they're there. I'd like to reiterate what Phil Vetro said, Paul McVie, Vetro said about the bulk pickup. I spoke with Attorney Gertrude two years ago, the 16th cycle about that, because in the first district, there's one particular person who abuses it every year, and I think there's some sense that he puts out the bulk trash so early and camouflages a need that other people add to it. That this is what the neighbors think, that people from, um, this area come and, and put on this trash. But it does, when it's not, when there isn't a restriction, there's no penalty for that, it's all just, it seems to draw three mattresses every year, because, uh, unlike people, trash and garbage residents. So we could, we could do, but I understood that that was really above you in the sense, and that's why I was referred to Attorney Gertrude, the Gertrude. And it's actually quite difficult to enforce, and it will take the time to outline all the reasons that we really can't accuse someone and, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it's hard to, so maybe we need to do that. But back to the, uh, the bulk trash collection, at least in my intersect with the residents that, um, I intersect with, it's been a great success, people are very pleased. I was very supportive of it, I thought it was a very thorough examination that we did when it was being, no doubt, the discussion on the Alderman, uh, at the Alderman level, we had lots of questions. And so some of that was really the how to line, one person, two person, when will that spell out the price of the trucks? And what, we didn't get to some of the smaller rollout pieces, and I spoke with you privately about, um, what, what happens in the first and second phase of, of this program needs, et cetera. We could have an area narrow street or a cumbersome area for some reason, would that require more true counting? Because that was not discussed publicly, so it wasn't authorized. And you said that you did not think so, and that you could try, of course, not to have that be. Um, so, it's a couple of questions. I guess I want this to elaborate on my point deliberately. Uh, other questions, as, as now, if I'm, that people don't cooperate, and we're tagging them to say, put them in my place, but also that tag says four-foot clearance. We didn't talk about four-foot clearance around every tote. The question is, or I don't remember anybody talking about that. Um, is there, is that possible? Is that feasible, have that four-foot clearance? And does that mean for every obstruction, like a car, or, uh, a tree? What does it mean? And if it's not feasible, um, can we get smaller trucks, as you mentioned? I mean, this is the next phase, and, um, it's a blind line with my district, but I want to share with my colleagues, so they may add to it if, if it's a concern of ours. So what's the, the straight answer, are there industries that you need to do more, uh, broadening or whatever?
I, I wouldn't say that it's 100% that we can use those trucks in our district, but I would say if people paid attention and followed the regs, uh, it's pretty clear. Most people have the opportunity to have four feet. Um, there are some people that put them right next to a telephone pole when they have a full yard, and, and that's an educational point. Um, and then there's some people that we do that. And we haven't not picked up trash, um, but eventually we will, if someone is of habitual, you know, non-compliance.
Well, pardon me, you won't be able to, now you can pick up the trash, but you still have the two-person, if, if, if I'm understanding this correctly, there will be a time where, when you won't have that handout to do that in if you wish to.
Presently, there's sometimes one, and sometimes two, depending on the ordinance, but presently, there are trucks that, well, it's just one drive right now. Um, and, and they get out, and myself and Bill have told, wanted to, the trucks have been in the truck. Um, and I think the residents, for the most part, you know, we always concentrate on those few people that don't do a good job, but as a whole, most people are responding to it, who do a, a, a good job. But there's always a few, and it's, it's always, you know, sometimes repeated, repeating the same.
And did you have, you any, uh, perception that seniors have difficulty meeting that? I mean, is any of it due to the fact that people find them difficult to lift or large to maneuver them, or is it just people not paying attention?
I mean, the 48-gallon ones for seniors, I think, I mean, I think they're perfect, but if someone had an issue, uh, if someone for medical reasons couldn't get their tote, we have a poll list that you can get a medical doctor's note, and then we'll pick up that both recycling.
You haven't heard that, seniors complain?
I must not be able to hear it tonight, I guess.
I said, but you haven't gotten any feedback, that that's an issue, that there's a legitimate maneuvering or negotiating, uh, issue?
I mean, we've had a few sporadic people in the wall, but nothing that, that I would say was high, nothing few. I think most people have been very positive with, with the experience. They liked the, the toters, they liked the opportunity to, instead of the two garbage bins, they have one. Um, I, I have, you know, I, I can tell you, I, I think maybe have one complaint since we've done this, in the sense of someone saying they wish they had two garbage bins. And actually, I won't name the owner, but I think one Alderman, who thought he was going to need two toters, now that he uses one. Uh, and he, so I think he's been pretty happy with it.
Any more comments, questions regarding solid waste? Paul McRae, just kind of pencil up.
It worked, thank you, Kathy. Um, through you, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's not a question with regard to solid waste, but this is the last department that will be asking questions about pertaining to public work, so I have a, uh, a question with regard to, um, Founders' Walk. I know that, um, Tom Flowers was here earlier, the veterans representing... I know that Tom Flowers was here earlier, the veterans, representing the Veterans Commission, the Milford Garden Club. They're dependent upon your department to see that Founder's Walk is completed in order for the festivities at the end of May. I believe it's May 28th is the date that we're shooting for. So, I just wanted to have some public assurances that we're on track. Trying to put me on the hot seat. I can tell you, the mayor calls me every day on Founder's Walk, and we are pushing as hard as we can. One of the things we're trying to do is move the poles and bring them down Shipyard Lane. And the mayor's looked at that. It's not a simple project. We're trying to unify that area so there will be no telephone poles going down that walking area. And where Reconstruction, Hito Construction stopped is where that last pole is, where the process of getting the UI finalized. And I believe that work will start in the next week or so. And then once the poles are moved, we can complete the project. It'll be a tight line, but I feel comfortable that we'll, we'll be close. Let's put it that way. We'll be able to walk down a walkway, I can tell you that.
All right, good.
Any more questions from the board concerning solid waste? See none, we'll open up the next account, which was account number 4426, wastewater. Page 101 through 105. Any board member have any question regarding wastewater? Alderman Gennetasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to the Finance Director. What's the, on the revenue side, the credits? Is there a number of how many credits we have, or nitrogen credits?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Director Salee or the wastewater superintendent have a specific numbers in terms of the estimated credits for this year and perhaps in the prior year? I will say that it is not a revenue line item per se in the Fund 12 wastewater fund. It actually, due to the, I believe it was a resolution, it actually goes into the debt service reserve fund, which is used to help pay the clean water fund loans and the portion of the sewer debt. It helps to defray those costs in the budget. So, that's where we deposit the credits as revenue into the debt service reserve fund.
Okay, we don't have any idea what that number is, or should we?
So, Alderman Gennetasio, so last year, we received $153,000 in credits. This year, if we use the same formula, we would have received about $220,000, round numbers. The state has adjusted the formula, and they're not giving us a full credit for the nitrogen anymore. So, we believe it's going to be closer to about $110,000, even though we have better results than the year before. So, there's a little frustration, as we all know. We anticipated getting a little bit more money back. Just for clarification, sort of what the board does, Ed Kozlowski has been the superintendent of wastewater for the last two plus years. He has done a tremendous job coming out of board, really modernizing and building a good team down there. He has given his notice. It will be a major loss, July 1st will be his last day, along with his administrative assistant, who's been here for a number of years. So, we're losing a lot of institutional knowledge, and it's going to be a challenge. And I'm going to be working with Tanya Barnes to get the positions posted. But they have done both Joyce, and they have done a tremendous job down there, running a very tight ship. I highly recommend the Alderman persons go down there and see what they do every day. It's very impressive. Most people just flush their toilet, think it goes away, and there's a lot of work around it. And the quality of work that they do.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up through you. Mr. Salee, you mentioned that the state changed the formula. Is this any relation to the budget? Is this that they don't want to give us more money because of their financial situation? Or is this for another reason?
That's above my pay range, so I really don't know that. You'd have to knock on some windows up in Hartford to find that out. I just know they cut the formula. The credit went to half of us.
It's more, most likely because of the financial.
I believe it started even before that, but who knows?
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And also, there's one and a quarter million dollars spent on electricity every year. Have there been any talks or plans to get alternative energy sources to help save some costs?
Yes, Alderman Grant, just to keep everybody in the loop. One of the things that we're looking at is the microgrid that we're hopefully going to move forward with the Parsus Complex, City Hall, Senior Center, and Harborside. If it comes across as the way the cash flow has been modeled to us, it'll be a decent saving per kilowatt. You know, the thing we're working at is a fuel cell, potentially at one of the treatment plants. Right now, the smallest fuel cell you can get is 400 KW, and that's a little oversized for what we need. Supposing you're going to be bringing out 200 KW in the next year, and that would match really well. And you get a preferred rate. The fuel cell is, if anyone doesn't know, it's a technology that's actually produced in Connecticut. I think they have, it's in Torrington. But it uses natural gas, and it's a chemical reaction, and it produces water, and it produces electricity and heat. The reason it's beneficial in our city is because the heat we can use in our digesters was very beneficial. So, it's very efficient. The problem is they're just too big right now for what we need for the two plants.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board members concerning wastewater? See none, we'll move on to the last account for this evening. Account number 4154, Sewer Commission, page 98. Any board member have any questions regarding Sewer Commission? See none, at this point, is there motion to recess?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question? Mr. Mayor, you are going to invite the Boys and Girls Club to come back, somewhere?
I will work for, yes.
Thank you. Is your motion to recess till the next budget meeting, April 25th? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Public Works and Recruits, for answering all of your questions and for the great job you're doing for the City of London and the residents thereof. Meeting, meeting, recess.